I'll move to order, please rise for the next.
Former Agent Superintendent of the United States of America, considering public for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our table of working minutes starts with the team twenty twenty four.
Um, four meeting minutes.
A second. And the motion made in second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The votes?
I'll move to excuse for members then.
I'm gonna give it to her. Okay, does my motion made in second, is there any discussion? Favor?
Aye.
The votes? Yeah, we're meeting.
We're seeking a amendment, we would like to add a under the consent agenda resignations. So under five consent agenda, the personnel for resignations, resignation of Melanie Hoffman.
So we need.
We need a motion.
I'm sorry, I thought we said it under the consented and the motion. I will move to add the resignation under consent agenda of Melanie Hoffman.
A second. I'll start.
With the motion made of second, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The votes? There you go. Oh, consent agenda. And I'll second that. With the motion made of second, is there any discussion? Discussion items focus on kids middle school.
So we have several, well, three groups of people to share with you the cool things happening here at Elma Middle School. There's one addition I can fill on the agenda, so my apologies, but I wanted you guys to meet Jordan Ruggles, who's new to Elma this year and has just been such a lovely addition to our campus.
I'm Jordan Ruggles, I'm the new middle school PE teacher here. I just want to introduce myself to you guys since I am new and kind of talk about what I've done in my classes so far, and what my goals are here as the new teacher. So in my classes, we do focus on different movements. This is junior high school, so I wanted to try out different sports that I may want to carry over, find something you can do outside of school to stay active, those are my main priorities. But I also, my biggest thing now, my goal now by the end of the year is to focus on different behaviors and trying to shape better young adults. My goal is by the time they leave my class, they are better, they are more mature, they can behave with one another, they have more accountability in themselves than when they came in. And we're still working towards that, and it's a marathon, not a sprint. But every day I focus on, well, how can you help the other people in your class? How can you become a better you? And I think that's very important. This is a very tough age for a lot of kids. And so I really try and hound on them, well, how can you help yourself today? How is that going to help your classmates? How can we make this a place you guys want to be? Because PE for middle schoolers, some love it. And the opposite side of that is, I'm uncomfortable here, you know, this is not my thing. And so I try to make my class a place everyone wants to be. And in order for that to happen, you have to have respect for one another, and that starts with yourself. And so my goals are to help shape them, get them ready for high school, get the seventh graders ready for next year, and just help them transition as better young adults and better humans. Thank you for having me.
I have to say one more thing, and he's going to be one of our web crew leaders. And it was a very intentional kind of decision. There will be two web leaders at middle school, two main crew leaders at high school, and you'll get to hear more about that later. But just the level of attention that Jordan pays towards character development, and you're a student athlete, you're a student first, is something that I really appreciated having you on.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Do you guys have any questions for me? Awesome, well, thank you for letting me speak, I really appreciate it.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Who wants to go next? Uh, up to you. So I'm Katie Better, I teach leadership as well as CTE electives here at the middle school. And I have some student groups who would like to do some demonstrations for you all. So first up, we're going to have Manny, who's our ASP president, as well as Anthony, who's our ASP secretary to talk about our leadership class. Lead you through a couple activities, so I hope you're ready, put your student hat on. And then after that, we have Charlotte and Nialy from Food Science, who also have a little experiment set up for you as well. Are you guys ready? All right, go ahead. Historian, sorry, I said the wrong one.
Leadership is doing the right thing, one thing at a time, quote unquote, is always told us.
So what we've been working on lately is the new recycling program that started this semester, character dears and committee work and team bonding.
Recycling program. What we've been doing in our recycling program is mainly these three things. The first thing we did was with our recycling program was to get the recycle bins approved by our county, get the recycle bins out to each teacher in class. Next, we made sure the classes were using the recycle bin responsibly. Then every week, we check in on the recycling bins and empty them out into the recycle bin outside.
Okay, the next thing is character dears. You might not know what character dears are, but character dears are penalties or challenges for students so that their character can get better. They usually get prizes as a prize if they do these character dears. And it's, it's a, it's a lesson for the students. It's for, it's for character development, which is an essential part of leadership, which can help us on.
Next thing we're gonna present is committee work. Committee work is how most of the things get done around here at Elma Middle School. A teacher who is better assigns us, or we choose a committee which consists of these three groups. Eighth, seventh, and sixth grade committees, which work on projects for their grade level. Equal Time, which plan activities that happen during equal time. Assembly Committee, plan most of our assemblies. Staff Appreciation Committee, they plan fun activities for the staff. Life Friday Committee, plan activities for Fridays. Yearbook Committee, work on taking pictures and designing the yearbook.
Our team bonding is meant to show how students can work together to complete a task. An example of team bonding activity Miss Vetter planned was trying to make the highest powered cards, which were really. The cards, um, which have a question to ask, which you hope that that's not the point. The activity would be building the highest symbol. Sounds simple, but you can't speak to each other. So, unless you let you.
You guys have a deck of cards on your desk?
They're in the plastic containers, they're just, they're just.
With you in the groups, this is to work together. You guys are just trying to build a higher tower than that?
We can't speak.
Without speaking. You guys are gonna try for the first thirty seconds. After thirty seconds, what if you guys speak? Try to direct and lead, are you gonna do? If the time's up. Now you're gonna continue working on it, but this time to more person in a group to speak. I'll switch to you. Now everyone at your table group is speaking. Take on five seconds left. Five, four, three, two.
Ours is a sin. Like today.
Should have made it a little clearer.
I think, I think we did.
Yeah, yeah, we made a single story, very effectively.
What do you guys think was hard about this?
Do you mean, have any good ideas?
I think it was hard to figure out if the other person was gonna understand what I wanted to mean, what I thought was gonna work versus my baby thought was gonna work.
What else?
It's always hard to read adjectives.
Now you realize and recognize the ideas of your teammates and the importance of listening to every single teammate to try to solve a problem. Not everyone has the same mindset and thinks differently. So next time you try to take, lead, recognize, and listen to everyone's idea, because you may never know.
Hi, my name is Charlotte Murphy, I'm in eighth grade.
My name is Ellen Murphy, I'm in eighth grade.
Um, today we are going to be presenting our triangle taste test. We do this every Monday, like two students like present, like to a class. And so that's what we're gonna do.
You need to.
A triangle taste test is a method that determines whether a sensory difference exists between two products. While using sight, taste, smell, and touch, we can determine the difference between the products.
Triangle taste tests are used in the food industry to collect data on what consumers like and dislike about a product. Many companies such as Oreo conduct these to ensure that a change in ingredients does not affect the taste of their product. They use this information to make adjustments as needed based on the results.
Uh, why do we learn them? In class, we learn about important factors that go into producing and manufacturing food products. Every time we do the test, we get to practice what we know to determine what we said. I'm gonna hand you guys a plate and a water. Please don't lift up the paper.
Triangle taste test direction, step one, take a small bite of sample one and make observations of the taste. Step two, take a small sip of water. Step three, take a small bite of the sample two and make observations of the taste.
Take a small sip of water, take a small bite of sample three and make observations of the taste. After tasting each sample, make a guess about which sample. After you make a guess, use your other senses to observe different types of products. Use those observations to support your guess. Okay, so everyone without looking accidentally, um, take a small bite of sample one.
It's hard to not look at it, I know. Just don't look too closely at it.
Oreo's one of those things that like.
This is way more daring than I typically.
I'm adventure bike chains.
Yeah, I use chocolate. But I have a plate that matches my cookies. This two's over here, this is everything. That's, that's a control very well, definitely.
Well, it took a too small of a bite.
Oh.
It's not believable. Why didn't I like two?
I like two, but. I don't know where it's at. That's with one chocolate. None of them have enough butter.
I mean.
Number two. But number two seems like it had a particular texture.
Yeah, I said it was crumbly and chocolate. Well, I'm not sure there are. I think our few misfits, but.
Oh, did you, did they get shit with you last?
So I'm not sure one of them.
Well, the plate's labeled too.
Yeah, and now I had to read back.
Yeah, that would change things. So if your paper towel is switched, the plate was labeled as well, so maybe double check.
Yeah, so actually.
Paper towels are like.
With my towel, my towel was shifted.
Which one do you think?
I think number two. Two's different. Is the sale. That, cause that. I would say number two is different.
Two is different.
Number two is like inferior. Yes. The one I didn't like. I knew I liked glue.
We're trying to get it.
But gluten free, I have a new appreciation. Yeah, but I didn't. Now that I know it's gluten free, I'm gonna eat the whole thing.
These are homing speaker tools, I mean, I would agree with that.
In our food science class, we talk a lot about food production and the different like jobs that are available in the food industry. And like, we study like, I don't know how to put it.
Different kinds of, different kinds of foods.
Yeah, like where they came from. So the history of Oreos. Samuel J. Porcello, an American food scientist that worked at Nabisco, created the well-known Oreo cookie in May of nineteen thirty five.
Oreos have been, have, Oreos have since been a very popular cookie with many different flavors and special additions.
Oreo, Oreos is classic.
History of gluten-free Oreos. Over the past years, more food companies are including gluten-free products for their customers. There are gluten-free, the gluten-free Oreo was released in two thousand twenty-two. Since then, there has been new additions to the.
Thank you. So if it was a middle school class, olive was would have been eaten by then.
Sure, Leanne, I've been teaching special education at Elma Middle School for twenty-seven years. I'd like to introduce Katie O'Hagan, she is a parent educator in our building, and her son Charlie O'Hagan. So first what we want to do is talk about how special services are meeting the board initiatives. And for our social emotional learning, we've added an effective communication class for students with social emotional regulation chapters. And Mr. Bonilla teaches that first period. And we brought a couple of our favorite support friends. These are our weighted stuck animals. And we can help a ton. Sometimes during our special ed meetings, we just pass them around. For our mastery base, we give students multiple opportunities to show what they know in kind of some fun and creative ways. Here we have some examples of how students can choose how they study their spelling words. In math, we use real menus, and we take the opportunity to practice being servers and then making the food. Couple other examples we have of our universal design is that in our life skills classes, we do cooking and cooperative projects and use hands-on material reels such as fraction hamburgers that are made at home. In helping to support our students with fine motor skills, we start with a sticker art that you can see is a little bit challenging. And then we move up to the hardest, and this is Charlie's favorite subject. So when Charlie can work his way through, he gets to move to something he loves. Yeah, which you show are multiple ways, we will pass these out for you all, that how students can access their learning. We have it in print form for those who can and choose to have it print form. But we also have visuals, and then students can choose their level of entry. Do I need a close procedure? Would I like to complete sentences? Or am I ready for a first, then, next, finally paragraph? After we've baked the sentence. And I'd like you to take a look at what we're doing for our career and college readiness. These are our sort boxes. Some of them are simple matching, others students will have to make a discernment as to which go with. And if you just pull out one of the little stacks, you'll see the Velcro cue to what they can do. Where will this help some of our students? They will become employed at Goodwill. And so in middle school, we're starting with symbols. And then when they go to the high school, some of them will have the opportunity to work at new to you, our consignment store. And then finally, after our late start training, teachers were given the opportunity to hear of the history of inclusion and how we got ADA accessibility. So our Eagle Time students went and took a walk around our campus. And the first activity I asked them to do was to walk up the exterior ramp. They were all like, whoa, yeah, kind of steep. I said, but now I want you to walk from the top down and think about winner. And you're the one in the ship. And the kids were like, that would be scary. And I said, you know what kind of was? But it was ADA compliant, it just wasn't great. But in the two thousands, we were able to have an elevator. And the kids were so excited for our kids to use the elevators. But as we walked around the campus, we found some challenges. And I'd like to first hear from our student Charlie O'Hagan. And then I'm going to show you what some of his friends thought about how we could improve our school. So Charlie, you go. Do you want to tell us about your disability first?
All right. My disability is cerebral palsy. I work with Miss Kendra on, you know, like foot, um, arms, um, all that fancy jazz.
What do you work on? What do you, what do you do with Miss Kendra?
Well, we, um, yeah, we do like arm, we like weight, wow, my head. Yes. Stretching and, yeah, we do, I do.
Want to read a question? What in school would you like to have access to more?
Not much.
Yeah, so what about the garden and the track?
Well, the track field, um, the track field would be fun.
Yes.
I do love, um, just running around the track or, yeah, that's really nice.
And how do you feel about the hill going down to the garden? Is that hard for you or is that okay?
It's okay, um.
It's okay? It's not steep?
It is, but.
How do you feel, uh, when you walk around the school and it hit you? How do you feel after school?
After school? I think it's just, you know, you're fine, you're just. You're relaxed.
You're relaxed. So what do you use at the school to help you get from the top of the building to the bottom of the building?
We have a few tools. We have the elevator and we have just like some rest times in between. And we get from this, my, from this.
So Charlie, you're dealing with cerebral palsy. Thank you. So Charlie deals with cerebral palsy and it's really hard to move throughout the school. Um, it's, um, it is a cognitive as well as a disability in mobility. And so getting from one class to the other can be challenging for him. We do build in some rest times for him, so it makes it a little bit easier on him. But at the end of the day, um, it usually ends in a nap of some sort, just to regain that kind of, um, uh, energy. And then, uh, every morning, uh, he takes the ramp down from the top to the bottom. He usually, he usually, uh, joins us in, uh, the special education area in the morning. And so instead of taking the stairs, he utilizes the ramp. And the, the wet, uh, cold days is a little bit trickier. So Charlie is kind of adverse to using stairs. He's afraid of falling down them and stuff like that. Um, he has mentioned that he would like to participate more in PE. Um, that sometimes he feels like it's a little bit too energetic for him and he doesn't have a whole lot of opportunity to stretch or do those things before he can participate in PE. Um, but Miss Kendra is working as wonderful and we love working with her. Uh, and that is also built into his schedule as well. And so if we could have some better access to those areas like the garden, it'd be, um, more enjoyable. Anything else that you wanted to add?
No, not really.
And Charlie, do you mean when you say at the end of the day that you're relaxed? Is that your word for meaning you're kind of tired and the day has kind of been a little much for you?
Yeah.
Yeah. But you're just really positive and so you use the word you relax.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
That's good for things.
I appreciate it. But I don't want to put words in your mouth, so I wanted to just know, but yeah. Okay, thank you.
Charlie, what is the one thing you would like to have access to?
Probably just pee. I think that just running along the track is, it's just, it, it's very dark. I, I like, um, yeah. This monster sometimes takes us around the track or something, so I like going around there. So it's very nice.
Going around the track.
Yeah. Um, running around however, it can be a bit tiring. I've done it before, very tiring. Um, yeah, so, but it can also be fun.
But Charlie? An eighth grader friend named Isaiah said that he was concerned because students don't have a safe way to get to the track, garden, or greenhouse. The ground should be leveled to make a safe route. I think he were thinking of you and one of our friends that uses crutches. So here's one student's visual for you. Yes. Thank you for letting us share how we want to help you and our community meet our district initiatives. Thank you.
Our focus on kids are just my. This board meeting, the very next topic is going to be from Mr. Monroe on all of the facility projects we need to work on. So see the guy in the brown hat behind you? That's the person where you say, Mr. Monroe, we need that walking path on that list.
It's on my list.
You've been hurt.
Oh, I guess that's the same.
I want to thank all the students and, uh, as far as just great representation of student leadership on how we're trying to make our schools a better place for everybody and what you're learning. Our focus on kids are my absolute favorite board meetings, like absolute favorite board meetings. So Charlie, thank you so much for being here. Um, I think you're the reason why we're here, the students are why we're here. We're here to build a better school for you. So I just want to thank all of the students.
So I have two different lists here. The first part is just like the, the stuff that we do in the summer. And it's, I call these my summer mandatory lists. This is the stuff we do pretty much every summer. Let me just kind of go down through the list, so we'll talk about.
Yeah.
Um, so one of the big labor things I do, um, strip and wax the floors. So we have to take all the furniture out of each room, sand it down. To get the level of old wax off, we re-wax and that's what protects our floors from getting all scratched out. So when you see scratches, it's actually the scratches in the wax. We re-buff them every year. And that, that takes a lot of time, but, um, the bleacher backstop maintenance, that's a insurance company requires thing that we have done. A company comes in, puts it all our bleachers and backstop, make sure we're safe for a year. Gym floor gets refinished, the two wood floor gyms. We have our fire alarms tested yearly. Another requirement, uh, shampoo carpets, we still have some carpets at the elementary that made my other list too, if we ever have money that we need to spend, I know that would be that's one. We have about eighteen carpets over there. They're not new carpets, they're old carpets. Eventually we'd like to go to tiles everywhere. Funding permitting. Touch-up painting. You get foot marks and stuff, we do touch-up painting. And then we try to usually every summer we'll paint some rooms, like paint the whole room, just to kind of keep it a ball rolling, yeah. So many, you don't want to bite off too much. Uh, air filters, replace some stuff. Our grounds equipment usually takes a beating during the summer, so I just always kind of find for some repairs on that stuff. We have huge, huge grounds to take care of. Uh, we control, there's some costs with the products we use. Over at our kindergarten playground, we got that fuss that has kind of become unsafe, that needs to be pulled out this summer. Uh, rake the wood chips. Our, our athletic fields, uh, we fertilize and see. Drag our gravel driveways, we clean some gutters, moss removal, deep cleaning of restrooms, up-down cleaning of classrooms, uh, repaint parking and fire lanes. We don't do that every year, but I think we're kind of getting there. We're starting to get bigger, so we do that this summer. Um, there's some copper water lines in the high school that we've been having to kind of manage with, uh, we need to start. Issues that require shutting down the whole water system to fix, so it's kind of the summer time. It's your time to do some of those. We need to assess the middle school gym on the backside. It's that, that was kind of found through our study and survey we did. There, there's some issues with the gutters up there. Uh, the problem is it's like fifty feet up in the air, so it requires a huge man lift to even get up there to look at it. I'm too scared personally to walk down with a, with a high off on a steep like that. Um, but that would, that's something we might need to bring somebody up to assess really what's going on. And then we are putting in a portable at the elementary this summer, it's probably going to be a great key game in the summer. So that's kind of the, the stuff we have to do. Funding and time for knitting, we can do other stuff. Either one is the projects, if funding were available.
Give me one second too. Our students also. Board policy, it'll get real private. So students who are, your parents are here, if you want to go and if you want to know all the board policies and the projects, you can stay.
Get a picture of all.
Seeing our students' eyes gloss over.
Glad you guys, proud of you. Have a good night.
Nice job. Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
He's very relaxed.
I don't know, this is kind of like the deferred maintenance kind of stuff that we have, you, you know, we're aware of it, you just don't have the money to do it. And this list is probably not even fetching close to the entire actual, you know, like, if we could, this. These are just some of the, the big, the big ones that kind of jump out. Uh, the preschool, uh, elementary, it's a new roof. I did have that quarter before, about twenty-seven thousand. Price is still accurate. The middle school gym, repainting the blue is fading to a nice chalky white. And then we only half painted it when we did it last time. I would love to see that. I have a rough guess, about seventy thousand. The elementary lunchroom, um, needs a paint job. That one was kind of pointed out in the study survey. The sockets and stuff, they're wood, the paint, it's kind of gone off a moment. Just kind of protects your asset, paint always seals stuff up, makes stuff less. Elementary school carpets, I think we have about eighteen rooms left. It's about five thousand apiece to pull out carpets and put in tiles. Repaving of the playground and the parking lot of the elementary, I'm sure you guys are aware of that even. Yes, of it. And, and drainage would be nice. The middle school gym, we have issues with that roof. I would like a professional to come up and look at that. They did some weird stuff where we have, the new gym has a sloped roof and it comes down onto a flat roof. And instead of there being some sort of gutter, it kind of just goes onto the flat roof. We end up getting water that curls. And so we end up, we've tried to do some things to fix it, but it kind of seems to be a little bit of a problem. It's right at that joint of the hole. So I would like somebody to kind of look at that. That, that's all, these are all capital projects. The parking lot lights. What else would be like, we could upgrade the LED, we could get it a little brighter out there, it's kind of dark, as you guys know, we like to. Add lights to the fast pitch in the baseball complex. We can have later games, poster and stuff. Kind of been talked about before, never was able to happen. Finish the interior of the fast pitch building. It's kind of a shell, if anybody's within sight, it's, uh, open studs. Solation. Not the best structure I've ever seen. So. Just makes it nicer, keeps stuff cleaner. Repaint the elementary school exterior, I have not got that one big yet, I know it's going to be a big ticket item because it's the size of the building. That's your assets. Like when we painted the high school, it was, uh, marked improvement, I very loved it. Build a hitting facility. That's going to come in around a million to do anything. But we do have the gym now and that's a great facility for that, so I mean, we're close to that. Spending nine bucks to have something. Uh, adding covered bleachers to Davis Field, I think the reality was ever moving it, that's not going to happen, so. How do we move forward? If we could somehow come up with some, we need some type of bleachers. Uh, a middle school gym interior needs painted. Uh, going over there, the old East Grace Harbor. We would either need to remodel that or to demo it. Uh, ADA access to Davis Field and the hang department, including the garden, it's very steep. I don't think a person can wield themselves in a wheelchair nothing down it. Period, so, uh, we did have, this already came up with the dark with the greenhouses. And unfortunately for the time being, that, the, the solution was to drive them down there in the van. So. Pretty lacking on the ADA department everywhere. I know once you start biting that off, they can get really expensive, but it's something we need to look into. Boilers at the elementary school. I'd like to see those replaced. I know the, the clean buildings initiative is kind of trying to get everyone to go away from fossil fuels. Apparently, all of our buildings are heated from the gas boilers. That's something down the road, we're probably going to be forced to look at. But, uh, those are all very large projects. And then, you know, if we did go away from boilers and got into like heat pumps, then we'd have to benefit the air. It's pretty hot nowadays in the summer, yeah, it's full shoulder seasons. Pretty hot. Uh, some of the big trees in front of the elementary school. I don't know, on a windy day, I fear for the cars that are here. I would like to see what's coming out. Says with you guys, but that's just kind of, you know, looking up, I see the branches falling. Been pretty lucky, but.
And it was all trees, that whole front, it was all trees, we played in a whole.
I know.
So, I mean, over time, it's for you.
Yeah, so. And that could be costly, almost to take down that big trees in that spot. A sand dresser, the golf course, love this one, blowing air and sand dress on the fields. Been doing pretty good with our fields, you know, considering all the rain we get and all the plane that we go on. So if we ever get a chance to, we could purchase a sand dresser, it'd be good. I put on air maintenance van, I don't know if you guys have seen my van, it's kind of embarrassing, but, uh, that's not a priority for me at all, I just threw it out there. Until it dies, I mean, it gets. I, I do like, if I gotta go, well, yeah, drive my own truck, because I'm not going to be stranded. I really need an asphalt van. Like I say, uh, as far as this looks below the bottom of that list. Uh, irrigation for sports fields. I mean, we, we spent a lot of time with these sprinklers and fighting with them. I mean, we spent a lot of time with these sprinklers and fighting with them. It's hard to get our fields. If we ever have a dry summer like we have had, it's hard to keep them alive. Soccer fields, we don't have the one sprinkler we have a little bit. And catch the heat fields because we're just watering the two fields there. Um, the parent pickup lane. We're battling potholes. We 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 plan it out, drained it out a couple, a couple, three, four times either, but. When you have over a hundred cars twice a day through that. Almost every week is almost like a year on your personal driveway at home. And so, uh, someday maybe that. Also, we did look at that when we were looking at our bond projects. All the little heating systems. And there's always, this is kind of a living list. I pulled this off of another list I had that a lot of stuff people.
Jeff has been tasked with, um, to begin building a projects list that has a deadline completion. And a deferred project list. So in that way, you as a board have a functioning list of all the different projects that we have in front of us. And Sheri actually can't thank you enough. This is probably a great night to have Charlie here because I think giving you an Excel spreadsheet of projects we need to work on. Doesn't really put it into context. So to have Charlie say, I would like to access the track, I think is exactly what, and I don't think you could have kind of been better. I don't know if you knew whatever you were doing with the maintenance list, but honestly, um, job. Because it gives a chance for us to look at the projects. And there's only so much money. And for you as a board to say, Jeff, this is what I need you to put your priority on. If we have this. X amount of funds, we need you to prioritize these projects. This document is not in its final form. What we're looking now for is, is how can we start giving you as board members the best information so you can begin making the best prior, like you can begin prioritizing. Uh, because again, working as a board, you're 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 in charge of the budget. And for us, I feel like, um, we want to start putting our projects in front of you as as board. And to give you leeway to start directing, like we need to move this up on the priority. This is something that we should make a commitment to. This is the work we shouldn't have done. So we're looking for feedback on format, what type of information you need, how will we be putting you as board members in the best possible position to begin making those decisions.
I think that when we're looking at priorities just right off the bat, especially having Charlie here, safety and access for our students. You don't pass through a sport field without passing through a classroom. That should be on. We should be looking at ADA is expensive, but it's an absolute must to offer that equality to educate and access everyone. So in my book, I look forward to all those things, that these things really. Are above the rest.
And just the nuts and bolts. So when Jeff kind of begins building this list, adding a column on, like if this an ADA thing, this is a classroom thing. Why kind of under identify like an additional column, Jeff, modify the list on what is the primary impact? So that way we can connect back to more priorities.
I'm gonna echo in, I'm turned it here too. I I agree, I think, but. The ADA needs to be addressed and it needs to go to the top of the list. Yeah. Yeah.
I want to say thank you. One of the things I did want to talk about in front of Charlie was that when we do honor evacuation draws. Because of safety issue, we have to keep the children outside this corridor wall underneath basketball hoops. And one of the kids said to me, but what if the fire was in the gym? And I said, darling, if there's really a fire, we're going to carry you down onto the fields. So, you know, the van and the things like that are awesome if we can plan it. But for the daily use and the unkind events, we really did need to bring several of our students with mobility gym, which is. It would be basically all hands on deck to get those kids quickly down that.
Jeff, has it ever been looked at, researched?
I mean, I know that they're talking, there's been talk of like the ramp down over by Davis, right, which he could. You know, a long trip to go get there, but that would, that could get you to the greenhouses and stuff. So it's just really steep, so.
It's just. I think this is why we need to get better at how we organize our projects. I think that was the request. That was the task. I think right now, right now, we need to get better at getting better. And the only way to do that is to organize the information and have a way to organize it so that way it reflects your board project. So I think a column on, I think also what would benefit us is a column on completion deadlines. So that way, if it's deferred, we acknowledge, we mark it as deferred. If it's not deferred, we say this should be completed by this date. So then that way we have these four border processes in place so that we kind of have an idea. And it does, I think, it gives the board as we're setting these facility projects.
I appreciate it. You reminding us that. Many of the projects in the end save money by doing them in a responsible timeline. And unfortunately, we're behind the gun. I've seen a lot of those things already, but I think. I feel like part of us being fiscal stewards is us making sure that we're not waiting until. Eighteen from crisis because we're gonna pay exponentially more. And I just don't think it's a good steward. It's just, it's just a bad. Stewardship for us is a bad example of how to attend to and take care of our our responsibilities. And so that reminder that, um. For whatever it is, that paint may not look like, well, it's not a crisis, but, um, it will become a crisis. And so. I don't know what that looks like in the way of the columns, but I think. I feel like, I felt like that was kind of reoccurring, like this will cost us more. Um, it's not just like adding something, um, but it's a different kind of cost to factor in.
All our buildings are pretty old. That's what we're up with. They've been maintained well, but they're old. And so. Things like the copper fires, some are the water, you know, I think it's better now, but it was very acidic, so. Some leaks that spring up on, so that. It's, I feel overwhelmed a little bit sometimes just with like chasing the emergencies. And so.
It's kind of the nature of the beast, but I feel like when we're just waiting for emergency, fixing emergency, we had three water lines break at the elementary school last night. Two, three. So I mean, so there was like. Yeah, all boys together. So I think giving, and we can't do it all. I just don't think. We have enabled you as board members to have the best information to be able to make these decisions. And this is our next step on again, getting better at getting better. So, um, Sheri, I'm gonna pick a better board meeting. Um, you didn't know that we were moving into our maintenance project list. Um, so it was definitely going to set the stage for the next conversation on how we think keep our students at the center of all our decisions.
I just wonder like what the ADA stuff. I don't, I'm not a grant type person. I don't really know where to go with these grants. I would imagine that.
Well, yeah, I have some, they have some ADA compliant grants. Yes, they do. And you could get anybody, I mean, even Sheri would help, I'm sure.
Oh, absolutely.
So and that, like, if somebody wants to, it's harder up like me to go after something that. Maybe come up with some. Right, so, you know, the, they're married in this room, so many people maybe even reached out to them aside from. There's a lot to do.
But you have to start someplace, right? And I think we've had, I feel like historically. I feel like. I'm just as a community person, I don't feel like historically we've done things very proactively. It's like been. Not like a planned budget, like we have X amount of money. We're going to put it towards something every single year. And there's. Capital, some and our fund balance, we're gonna move somewhere and immediately have a project ready to go. And I don't know if we've had. Try, it feels like we should have projects completely on standby, like, okay, there's an extra eighty two thousand dollars that we've had it, that we. Had to have. That's enough to do this, you know? And sometimes I think it's easier to go, there's never enough money, like it's almost. It feels like too big of a thing, but when it's broken down like that, that fills a little bit.
You can make things to start a chip, you know what? Yeah, we have the list, the old list that I had when I was going through it. I was like, oh, that's done, that's done.
Yeah.
So we've been doing pretty good on that. It's just.
Also, I found that that at times, some of the best like plans we plan for one project, but unfortunately. Other emergencies become more. Come up before and then we have to shift our focus over.
Well, you said. We would all like to be proactive rather than reactive. And you can, you can plan, you can, you know, have the best like plans, but. Planning for things to happen and then having that priority is really where we should start.
So, you know, I'm always open to feedback for support, to other people about this.
We have to do voice tonight, so that was great.
That was good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, do you have any one register for someone? Anyone tonight? Okay, unfinished business. We have approval to adopt policy twenty one ninety five academic acceleration second final reading.
I'll move for the approval to adopt policy twenty one ninety five active acceleration second.
All favor.
I.
Opposed. Approval of policy five thousand, staff second, final reading. Approval of policy five thousand. Second, final reading.
I'll second that.
Motion made seconded is there any discussion? All in favor?
I agree.
Opposed. Approval of policy five zero zero one, hiring retired school employees, second, final reading.
I move for the approval of policy five zero zero one, hiring retired school employees, second, final reading.
I'll second that. Motion made seconded is there any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed. She carries. Approval to adopt policy five zero zero four, catch two four programs, second, final reading. With approval of policy five zero zero four, infection program second, final reading. I'll second. And the motion made seconded is there any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed. Motion carries. Approval of policy five zeros or five, volunteer exposure, certification, requirements, assurances and approvals, second, final reading.
I'll move for the approval of policy five zeros or five, unqualified for exposure, certification, requirements, assurances and approval, second, final reading.
I'll second.
And the motion made seconded is there any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed. Approval of policy fifty ten, non discrimination affirmative action, second, final reading.
I move for the approval of policy fifty ten, non discrimination affirmative action, second, final reading.
I'll second. Then a motion made seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed. She carries. Approval of policy fifty eleven, sexual harassment of district staff provision, second and final reading. With approval of policy fifty eleven, sexual harassment of district staff provision, second, final reading. Then a motion made seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed. She carries. Approval of policy fifty twenty, personnel, second, final reading.
I'll move for the approval of policy fifty twenty, personnel, second, final reading.
I'll second that.
Then a motion made seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed. She carries. Approval to adopt policy fifty one sixty one, stability and work ethic, second, final reading.
I'll move for the approval to adopt policy fifty one sixty one, stability and work ethic, second, final reading.
I'll second. Then a motion made seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed. Motion carries. Approval of policy fifty two oh one, drug preschools community workplace, second, final reading.
I'll move for the approval of policy fifty two oh one, drug preschools community workplace, second, final reading.
Then a motion made seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
I agree.
Opposed. She carries. Approval of policy fifty two thirty one, length of workday, second, final reading.
I move for the approval of policy fifty two thirty one, length of workday, second, final reading.
I'll second that.
Then a motion made seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed. Motion carries. Approval to adopt policy sixty five fifty, capitalization threshold for subscription based information technology. Second, final reading.
I'll move for the approval of policy sixty five fifty, capitalization threshold for leads as in subscription based information technology. Second and final reading.
I'll second. Then a motion made seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed. Motion. Twenty five thousand, kill me.
Well, we decided not to add to the list as board meeting, but Suzie also has a whole list for the next.
Okay.
She goes, she goes, should I add in the new first readings? I go, let's give a second.
Thank you.
Okay, new business approval of class of twenty twenty eight booster fundraiser.
Hi, I'm Julie Rup. I'm here for the class of twenty twenty eight Booster Club. Um, we are requesting to take over the comedy night fundraiser that the junior class has been putting on for the last couple of years. Um, they're done with it. It was very successful and we're hoping, um, to get approval to lock that in, uh, for the next four years while our students are in high school.
I'll move for the approval of the class of twenty twenty booster fundraiser to. Take over the comedy show for the next four years.
I'll second. Motion made seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed. She carries. That's a, that's a good one.
Yeah.
Okay, approval resolution zero six dash twenty three twenty four for reduction.
Uh, we are seeking action on a reduction course. Resolution. Um, there's a, uh, you all saw the article that came out the day of the globe this week. So it's. Common practice right now, where schools are coming across desert cliffs and short poles. Our district is no different, but I don't think we're in. Near the shape that I saw some of our neighbors are in. Uh, we're nowhere near the shapes that we're in, which are. So I'd like to move forward on the key building plan, just take forward the action. And that's what we're seeing tonight.
I'll move for the approval resolution number six twenty three twenty four for reduction in force.
Then a motion made and seconded. Very discussion. All in favor?
I.
Opposed. Motion carries. Uh, approval of WIAA resolutions zero seven dash twenty three twenty four. I don't think Mr.
This is our annual, this is our annual WIAA contract.
I can motion for the approval of the WIAA resolution zero seven dash two three two four.
I'll second that. Then a motion made seconded, is there any discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed. We will to move both April twenty twenty four meetings to the Tuesday. Right, to Wednesday, we normally would have scheduled on. Um, this is mostly due to the fact that board members, Michael Smith has. Soccer games. Yeah, he would most definitely like to be here. I would like him to be here.
It would limit that they would have to be rescheduled a special board meeting. So tonight, where we did an adjustment to the board agenda that cannot happen during a special meeting. Once that board agenda is set and. It's coming out on that first Friday or within twenty four hours.
When the original agenda goes out, no more.
When the original agenda comes out, we're not allowed to make any adjustments. So with that, so, um, I don't forecast any changes. We've just been trying to capture, I mean, especially as the board just adopted the. Um, we've just been trying to capture, especially as the board just adopted the uh um reduction resolution. I don't foresee more resignations coming in for that that day approval.
I have a, I have a small, uh, I guess it would be, uh, just to kind of tap on to that. I don't know how everyone else on the board feels about the fact that. Although I appreciate the agenda coming out on Friday, I feel like if we were to have it come out on Monday, it would mitigate those last minute additions. Just not gonna agree? I feel like we.
What would that give the board enough time to have to read through it?
Say that again?
Would you have enough time to read through it?
Yeah, I mean, we.
Well, cause that's the reason.
I mean, for two meetings, yes.
That's the reason it went to Fridays more because everything was coming out last minute, uh, changes and.
There was so much that wants to be added.
Right. But but as far as like, like I think the biggest thing for us to review is like, for example, all those policies we just got.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, there's so much reading in there and it basically needs that many days to do.
If I'm ready at the weekend, we'll be able to sit in there.
Okay.
I'm fair with that actually.
Yeah.
Good for Fred.
I just brought up, cause I told Mr. Snell. Okay, so um, we have approval, a motion for the approval to move both of those meetings under certain conditions.
So that, so that would be April, April ninth and April twenty-third would be the two Tuesdays.
Did I hear this correctly, though? We can't change?
No, they cannot be changed. That would be original goes out on Friday.
They have their special. So after that Friday.
So, and it would just be those two meetings.
Okay. So Friday would be our deadline, like no changes, just for those two meetings.
I'll. Okay. I'll move to approve a move of both um April meetings twenty twenty-four. I'll second that.
Then a motion made of seconded, is there any additional discussion? All in favor?
I.
Opposed? She carries.
Thank you.
Enrollment.
Yes.
Do you have a question?
We have. Um, we are staying actually really consistent um on this last. So. Went up by, yeah, we went up by one finding, one point eight students um, or twelfth grade, you know, down by one. Junior year up by one. So in-person students, fifteen hundred and sixty-two students. Um, well, I shouldn't say in-person, but open door students are in person are, open doors enrollment, when you scroll down. Um, is sitting at fifty-two point five seven, running start, um fifty-eight point two four, so we're still running about sixteen hundred eighty point three eight eight students. It's nice that our running start number's gone down as we're, as our students are accessing more marginal credit, college credit programs that Mark has been working really hard on growing. So that number sat around sixty-eight, so that's come down by about six, so it's definitely moving more of our students back to learning in person. Uh, that fifty-two point five seven students, those students are, open door students are in person. Um, so. We're running about sixteen hundred and ten that we're supporting in person. Questions? Pretty impressed with it. Um, as I said, a lot of our neighbors are experiencing severe decreasing enrollment, so to be a district that has been increasing and it's staying stable is unique right now.
Uh, budget report.
You guys have your budget report? Right now, our fund balance is looking at about three point five million. And on those projects, when we meet with the budget committee, those are things we can build in for next year. Do you have any questions on your reports?
So will you please just remind me, I know I'm supposed to know this, but what is the target fund that we're not to go below? That the.
It depends on what our expenditures are for that year. It's four percent of expenditures.
Four percent.
So right now, it's like about one um, one point three, I think it is, or one point eight? I can't remember.
But four percent is what they recommended?
No, four percent is what the board approved many years ago. What is recommended is one month AP, one month payroll. For us, it would probably be closer to eighteen, nine percent to have that sitting aside.
Hasn't happened since two thousand eleven, two thousand nine, when the state missed a payout um and school district.
We did ours probably back in two thousand two, two thousand three, we did a minimum fund balance.
I mean, uh, when the state missed a payment.
Oh, that was like twelve, ten, twelve, right in that area.
So when the state missed a payment and then you need to have enough fund balance to pay your bills and pay your employees.
And so we would have to have double of what we invited said, four percent, we would have to.
Yeah, double at least, yeah. We were lucky enough to have the fund balance to make payroll and not have to pay interest. There were quite a few districts that paid.
And what's the interest?
Interest. Well, it's with the county charter and it was.
Time, okay. But but we didn't even do board action, any priest did, and all ministers and what?
No, definitely not.
We, we.
Yeah, we, I thought we did too. We talked about raising.
We talked about raising it, but we haven't brought the policy. I don't believe forward to do that.
We can bring it forward for discussion on the April ninth study session.
Yes. Before I do budget is perfect.
Sure. So I'm not totally liking someone like, you have some from that.
We did.
Yeah. Like, wow, I feel like I was just. I was just like, definitely, I, I believe about what Mike on our meeting, on our budget meeting for resale and having, we have to talk about a lot of different things. Seems that I. Anybody have any other discussion about the budget? Or the reports? Hi, superintendent report.
The big thing that I'd like information on is we are scheduled for four burn walks. Um, we haven't thought. Actually, I haven't joined for it on one of the elementary, but I'm interested on what board members are interested in for burn walk. I still feel comfortable keeping it on the schedule. We have a hundred and eighty days of school a year, so I I think still holding true to a hundred and eighty days of student learning, so.
I don't do it, you know.
Yeah, I, I think part of people do though, so.
Then it's the next one.
So Friday.
Friday, Friday.
Friday. This is a half day, by the way. It's a half day, but I still think, again, a hundred and eighty days of student learning is there more interest for a burn walk and what board members are enjoying this on.
I'm with this one, it's Friday.
Yep.
I'm really like to be. I'm gonna be for you.
I'm gonna be caring for all of those people who's been out there.
So Dana, where would you like to go?
From my arms to yours. I actually want something for school. I, I think Michael has it.
Okay.
So.
He's been to the elementary, so he would probably come out to the.
I sent him to the high school.
So we're gonna come to the middle school on the uh Friday. So.
Thank you.
Awesome.
I just, it's, it's good for us to first view regular.
Yes.
I'm like, you know, so it doesn't feel so like, I'm a new guest.
So nobody's to the elementary, though? No, well, I think it'll be, I'll follow with Michael, so I think it'll be Jamie and Michael and uh we'll be at the middle school. And I, I like the board meeting walks. I think it's great for, for board members, again, um, focus on kids are some of my favorite board meetings. And having to see what's happening in our schools every day gives you as board members context on what, what we're all here for.
Um, and I was just gonna say that, you know, these focus on kids, board meetings. It's nice to see that, uh, what they're working on in classroom, students doing presentations, but also on board walks that I've been on. Getting to actually see them in their environment with their teachers and other staff members and interactions. Engagement.
And also, I think when we're doing them, when we're hitting another building later on, it's really nice to see those classrooms, uh, maybe what is involved and change.
We saw some, it was on the last one, the last one, Michael, it was a, we saw some really great examples. So. Do staff members name, so they feel like they can spend hours just watching a graduate ground teach.
I might be the only one that understood the speech. Um, yeah, it was, it was great, it was great, so. Okay, uh, student reps are not here this evening, so with that, we're gonna go ahead into.
May I ask a question?
Please.
Is that the year that we put it out for the student rep application?
It's May, isn't it, that we're gonna get?
Springtime.
Yeah, spring.
Well, I think, I think that we need to have a future discussion in regards to our student, two student reps and whether to reevaluate what that still applies. And move forward with that. So I don't know if it could go to next year, but I think we are um at a point where we need to talk about it.
Play a map agenda for.
I, I think uh, both how we can in a very tangible way help support this, what the onboarding, like what their responsibilities are and. Like, this is how, and this is exactly who you connect with at the middle school, this is your primary type of elementary school. I, I feel like the, the kind of cloud ring is not really having clarity of what.
I'm suspended.
We'll, 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 we'll talk.
That's what I wanna do, if I wanna bring it, I should bring up the discuss it, yes.
Yes. Okay.
And this is.
Got it on.
Your agenda.
Thank you.
For Tuesday, April.
The ninth. Um. We will, we will move to executive session for public bargaining, thirty minutes with no action taken. Thank you, everyone, for receiving. Have a great rest of the weekend, have a happy season.
We'll come out at.
Have a great spring break.
Seven.
Oh, I forgot. That's right. Right into that. What?